All right, we're going to go ahead and call the La Porte County Council's special meeting for December 9th, 2020 to order. If everyone would please stand for the pledge.
Kristi, do you have the flag?
John? Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United.
The United States. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Wow, who did that?
Me.
Wow.
No, Kristi, Kristi did it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kristi.
Wow. Okay, get off now, Kristi.
I can't.
Hey, Randy? Mr. President?
Yes.
I just hung up the phone with Mike Rosenbaum. He thought the meeting was at 6:30, and so he's going to be zooming in momentarily. We hung up real quick, so I think it would be probably prudent to wait for him. Thank you.
Well, the meeting started. So I mean, he can join in. We've got a few things to go through here real quick. So Kristi, are we going to see all the family pictures?
I can't.
Great picture.
What are we doing?
Hey, Kristi, sharing. There should be a little red icon at the top of your screen. Click Stop Sharing.
There's not one.
Who's running the meeting?
Uh, me, I was.
Yeah, pick me out and I'll get back in.
You went.
Hey, Kristi, can you introduce everybody, including the dog while we're at it? That's right.
Lily, Lily in London.
Okay.
Let's see. I don't want to remove you.
Yeah, just remove me and I'll get back in.
No, don't.
Okay.
Kristi, she could go away.
Move her.
Uh.
Uh, Kristi, just close your Zoom session and go back in.
It reminds me of last meeting when I said Zoom's really easy to get on.
Oh, see, right there. Did you see that, Kristi? Go back up to the top of your screen. There's a little red hover up at the top. There's a little red button that says Stop Share.
I don't have it.
Okay, go down to the Zoom button in the taskbar.
It shows up every now and then. You're doing something because it's showing up.
I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Right-click on your little Zoom icon in the bottom of the screen and close the share screen.
Elaine, you're worth your weight in gold.
I, it does not give me that option. It says quit Zoom and it still won't let me do it.
Twenty thousand viewers and we're having technical difficulties.
There, Joey took it from you.
Thank you.
All right, now you got it.
Okay, but now then how do I get back on here? Let's.
Bo, you're on. All right.
Just go ahead. We'll be fine.
All right. So roll call, Madam Monitor.
Uh, Mr. Garner.
Here.
Mr. Mullenauer.
Present.
Mr. Novak.
Present.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Rosenbaum is coming. Uh, Mr. Santana.
Present.
And Mr. Yagelski.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open. So anybody from the public who would like to speak on this, since we have so many people on here, if somebody from the public would like to speak, please, um, we're going to try and, I wouldn't say, I'm not saying control it, we're not trying to stop it, but sometimes if everybody starts talking at once, it's hard to find out who's talking. So anybody from the public who would like to speak?
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Vidya Cora, 105 Woodside Drive, Michigan City, County Commission. You know, the reason I just wanted to talk to you and the rest of our friends on the council is just wanted to share with you how this all came about. I received an email from Andrew McQuire and the EMS, and as you know, I work closely with the EMS, both at the clinic as well as the hospital, and I have been seeing the extraordinary work our EMS staff has been doing over these past several months. And frankly, they have been putting their life at risk. And so when he reached out and said that hazard duty pay, which many organizations are doing, would help the morale, and so I said that was a reasonable thing to do. I did send my response to him, and also I copied you, Mr. President, and I also copied the council attorney, that I wanted to make sure that you all, all of you are kept in the loop. I really feel over the last eight months, many people have gone through a lot of difficulties, and particularly the frontline workers have put their lives at risk. So I think doing hazard duty pay, a single payment, whatever you as a council feel is appropriate, would be helpful. It will be a token of appreciation for them, and also it will help the morale. So I just wanted to let you know how this all came about, and I would appreciate you doing this because I think this would be a positive thing for our county, the residents of the county, and for the people who take care of us. Thank you, Mr. Pres.
Thank you, Doctor. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Mo, you trying to talk?
There, there you go. Am I considered public here?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a meeting.
I agree with Dr. Cora. Our people in EMS, our sheriff's department, people who are actually on the frontline, they are putting their lives at risk. When they go into a house or business or wherever to bring somebody out, and they, they may or may not know that they may be COVID positive, they're putting their life out there, and they don't really have a choice. This is their job. Okay, I agree that they should be compensated for what they're putting up with. Now, looking at some of the letters that we've been getting from people, there's a few people, a few things in there that kind of resonate with, number one, that, you know, people in our offices haven't missed a day, and they could work from home, and they have all the PPE we could possibly buy. I think that separates them from the people we're talking about, the EMTs and sheriff's deputies who actually are dealing face-to-face, body-to-body, with people who may or may not be positive for COVID. And I can understand where it would be reasonable to compensate them for the risks they have taken. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Rich, anybody else from the public who would like to speak? Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tony?
Tony Redrigus, Director of Community and Economic Development. I know your agenda's very limited, but I wanted to, given the time-sensitive nature of this particular announcement, December 15th, there will be a hiring event. Hopefully, all of the council, the commissioners have seen the announcement that has come out and the 200 new jobs that ultimately will be added out at the Midwest Trade Center. But I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware and could mark their calendar for December 15th from noon to 6:00, and a shout-out to Mayor Dermody. The, quite frankly, it's the only facility large enough to adhere, completely adhere to the social distancing requirements that are necessary for something of this nature would be the La Porte Civic Auditorium. So masks will be handed out. They're going to pay very close attention to all of the guidelines, and I wanted to just make that known, and a quick thank you to all of those that have been involved in this process. It's an extremely exciting, large announcement, great news at a time when everyone needs some good news. So I wanted to make sure that everyone had that saved the date. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Great job. Anybody else from the public? Joey, can you resend Mike Rosenbaum the invite, or somebody's doing? He just sent me a text.
I muted yourself.
Anybody else from the public?
Uh, yes, yes, this is Christine Harlow, and I'm the Director of Adult Protective Services. And I just, first off, wanted to say that my staff has been doing an amazing job. Well, always, but since this pandemic, it's been extremely difficult. We still do home visits. We do home visits with the most vulnerable, those who are sick. I can't tell you how many times myself and my staff have been tested for COVID. Two of us actually contracted COVID, myself being one of them. I'm getting over pneumonia now, my COVID pneumonia that I was, that I got. And I really just wanted to say that my staff is amazing. They've been through an awful lot, going to homes where we never know if they have COVID. We do the best that we can. We wear our PPE, but no, we never know when we're going to check on somebody that's being abused, neglected, or exploited, and we're talking about the elderly and adults with physical and mental and psychological developmental issues, what the state of Indiana terms as endangered adults, so the most vulnerable. And I'm just amazed at my staff and their dedication to making sure that people are safe and that they're receiving the proper medical care.
Great. Thank you very much for sharing that with us. We appreciate it.
Mr. President, Vidya Cora again. I just wanted to give a shout-out to Adult Protective Services. During these months of social isolation, they have been a godsend for all of us medical providers, helping us take care of the most vulnerables. I just wanted to also extend my gratitude to all of them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Did the record show that Mike Rosenbaum has joined the meeting? Can you hear us, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, Mr. President, you know, I will still yield to anyone else from the public, but I do have a few statements that I would like to make before we get into the special meeting business. If you would like me.
That'd be under public comment though, or would that be under?
Hello?
Well, rather than, okay, you have somebody, you have somebody out there. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't think I know how to do this very well. Can you hear me at all?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Alan Lanning. I just was asked by someone to come or to participate tonight. Everybody that I'm looking at already got my email, so I don't think I really need to take up your time to add anything else to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, and we appreciate your input.
Thanks, Alan.
Any other public comments? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. So we'll move on to.
Know that I'm here and that I'm a good person.
Joey?
They all did, they all did.
Joey?
Yes.
Never mind. You took care of it. I just heard somebody talking, so. So the special meeting business, the first item on the agenda is consider approval of additional appropriations from the General Fund, 1,000 Dual Homestead Collection, in the amount not to exceed $40,000 for security upgrades for the Treasurer's Office. So before we, before we have a conversation about this, Guy, do you want to talk now or at the beginning of the next one?
I'll talk at the beginning of the next one.
All right, all right. So.
May I, may I talk now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Santana here, you guys. Um, right now, I want everyone to know that I am, I'm in protest of this meeting. First of all, the question comes about that when a special meeting is called, that the president has to get some sort of consensus, and I never did find out what that consensus was, as far as those that said, yes, let's go ahead with the meeting, and others that said not in favor of the meeting. So I'm just making that statement. I know we're here, we're in the meeting. It's not going to go away, but I don't think that this was handled correctly. I will remind everybody that December meetings for the County Council, you folks out there, need to know, we on purpose, on purpose, I say, did not schedule them. For the fact of, and honest to goodness, I'll say it just like this, straight up, because we would be bombarded at the end of the year to do more spending, and I don't agree with that. So I'm going to say this, and you may rebut me after a while, whatever, but I truly believe that our president, Novak, was bullied into having this meeting, as when the first part of the thread came out, he was the one that said, we don't have December meetings. We don't do that. That's, that's the point. All of this can wait till January. I say this, folks, too, because there's new members that are coming in next, at the first of the, not only just new members to the council, but my goodness, the commission and every other office in the county. Let's, what's our hurry? There's no hurry to spend, spend, spend at the end of the year. Um, let's see, what else do I have? I have that, I have that.
Well, Jeff, I just want to say. I agree with you, Jeff. I'm shocked we're having this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. And I think there's a couple other few that are, but I don't know if they want to, you know, say it or not, but I'm telling you right now, here, okay, so I'll just end with this. That's my protest of the meeting. I am going to participate. I had thought about, you know, abstaining, but I can't. I just can't do it. I have to vote my conscience. And I'm going to say to, for me, out there, what the, what the general public are saying, the citizens are saying, no, no, I'm sorry. You know, there are so many things and others that are, that have put themselves in sacrifices. Um, I, so I just had to get that off my chest.
Let me just, the topic we're on right now is the Treasurer's Office, so.
I know, Randy. That's why I asked you. I wanted to make this statement. I should have made it at the beginning of the meeting. Maybe we wouldn't have, you wouldn't have been able to open the meeting, but I got you. I had to get my words out.
But I don't think you would have, right, I agree. And just for the record, I was not bullied into having this meeting. Two, the comment that I made was is, we don't have any, we don't have a December meeting scheduled to do this. That's what I said, so.
And, Mr. President?
And I don't believe that we don't take a vote to see if we're going to have a meeting or not.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would also like to add to this conversation. All department heads know that all their bills, all their invoices have to be into my office by Friday, or they're not going to get paid. We don't spend money in January, and we don't spend money for most of December. We can't get our bills paid unless we have them at the beginning of December. So when, when Mr. Santana says that, or Councilman Santana says that they don't have, you don't have December meetings because you don't want people to keep spending their budgets towards the end of the year, they can't. We can't get, we can't let them spend after Friday. They, they all know that, and I think most of the department heads that are on this call will back me up when I say that. You know, my office has to have time to process, and the commissioners have to vote on those claims before we can pay them. So December and January are months when you really cannot spend money, unless they are for credit cards, unless they are for utilities. We can encumber money to carry over to the next year, but we don't have, I don't know why we don't have a December meeting, but it's not because they want to spend their budgets down.
It's not the purpose of the meeting.
Okay, let me, let me say this, just, just for a second, please. But that's not what I'm, I'm not saying that it would be their budgets into, into spending. It's, it's requests.
I thought you said that.
Okay, oh, no, no, okay, but listen, here's what I'm really meaning. It's like the request that you had put forward to us to spend money at the end of the year, and it is like the stipend. So I'm not talking about the department heads or whatever to come and say, I'm going to buy this, buy this, buy that. No, I'm talking about, we don't have these things because normally we would just hold it over to the next meeting. There's no rush.
The reason I, the reason that I did this is because I had intended to get it on your November meeting, and I didn't have the numbers. So I had to wait for the numbers, and when I heard that there was going to be a special meeting, I asked Randy if I could add it to this meeting, and he said yes. That's why I'm on here.
And honest to goodness, this isn't any, you know, I'm not.
We're not here to debate why we're having.
Not a Jeff and Joey or auditor, treasurer, councilperson. I'm just, I'm stating the facts as far as how this has been handled in the past, and quite frankly, I'll refer to, if they would like to, but Mr. Garner, who's been here, coming up on 18 years, will finish off with 20. Mr. Yagelski, the same amount, and there has been a rhyme and reason that we shouldn't be here this evening.
All right, we are here this evening. So we're having a meeting, and we're, the first item on the agenda, as I stated, and that's what we're going to address now that we're done with the rest of that, is consider approval for additional appropriation from the General Fund, 1,000 Dual Homestead Collections, in the amount not to exceed $40,000 for security upgrades for the Treasurer's Office.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Garner.
Second.
Seconded by who?
Mr. Quinn.
Seconded.
Point of order, point of order for the commissioner?
There, I don't know that you can point a board or us.
Well, I can tell you this, what the rules are. You don't do any construction, destruction, or additions, or anything else to a county building without permission from the commissioners. We are, sorry, Joey, love you, but we are the owners of the building, and you can't just go decide that you're going to completely remodel anything unless you go through the commissioners, and then we will bring it back to you and tell you it's okay, just pointing out the way it's supposed to be. That's the way it is. Commissioners are in charge of the buildings. Am I correct?
Mr. Attorney, I don't know.
Commissioners are. So let me ask you this, Mr. Marzinski, if it gets appropriated with the understanding that they've come back for approval to the commissioners, is there an issue with that on your end?
It has to come through the commissioners for approval, period.
That's what.
Before or after?
Right, before or after.
So they would all, this.
And I don't have a problem coming back to the commissioners with this, but I had to get it approved now before, before your next meeting.
Well, we got a meeting next Wednesday. If you can get it on the agenda, we'll talk about it. You know that.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
And I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Is there any other questions or comments regarding this topic?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, this states, from what I read, security, and I'd like that explained to me. I know I read something about a door and carpet and something about a wall or something, or a bank, something about obstructing the vision for the safe, or.
Right.
Just that explained a little bit.
Right. One of the, one of the, uh, well, I can't think of the name. When we had the U.S. Marshall studies done, one of their recommendations was to obstruct the view of the safe from when you stand at the counter, and because right now you can look in and you can see that safe, and it's open, and that we're a prime target for a robbery. The other thing is that if you'll know, if you'll remember how the Treasurer's Office is, there's a Dutch door that's right next to where you pay your bill, and that door is open all the time, and that, one of their suggestions was to close that up, make that a wall. Now, we originally advertised for $55,000, but I had heard there were some objections to some of the security measures that have to be done. So we took that door out of the, of the cost, and, you know, we're, we're trying to think of some other way to block that. But we, we have problems, and I think I saw Larry on here. We have problems in the Treasurer's Office with electrical drops and drops for the computers. They're, they're fire hazards. They have them plugged into extension cords around there. And as a, as a bonus from the security measures, I, we would construct a wall so that Kristi would move her desk behind this wall so that she would have her own office. That wall would have a dual purpose because it would shield the safe and from the, from the public. So those are the things that I would like to have done. And while Larry was with me in the office, the, the weekend after Thanksgiving, and he, he suggested that while we're doing this, we change the carpeting there. The carpeting is the original carpeting that has been there for, I don't know how long, and it's badly soiled. Larry tried to have his girls go down and clean it, and they can't get it cleaned. Larry, is there something else that, that you want to add to this?
Yeah, one of the things we've been trying to do is get to some of these areas as we can to get the carpets upgraded, because it is the original carpet. It's so soiled that we can't even get stains out of it. The girls have gone over there, they've shampooed it. It's just, we, you know, we're trying, we're trying to improve the environment that everybody's working in to make it a better environment.
Well, you know, that, that's the whole building, really, but that, the carpet doesn't have anything to do with security.
No, it doesn't. The carpet, and I, well, both, all three of us, Kristi, Larry, and I will all agree with you on that, but it, since we were doing construction down there, we thought we would replace the carpeting with it.
Hey, Joey, let me ask you this. Auditor, Marshall's security inspection or what have you, how long ago was that done?
Uh, three years ago, I think.
Two or three.
Uh, yeah, two or three years ago.
Call it two or three. Let's do that. Let me put that right there. You know what? Well, well.
Okay, let me finish. One of the things is, is that most of the departments have funds set aside. They have funds, like the auditor has a dual homestead, the recorder has the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund, the assessor has. recorder has the, uh, recorder's perpetuation fund, the assessor has the, um, reassessment fund and the sales disclosure fund. And so they can all do renovations with those funds and not affect, um, the, the general, general fund or the taxpayers' money. So when, when Christie and I were reconciling all of our funds, um, in, in October, and we saw that we would have $177,000 additional money that has to be put into the general fund, we thought maybe we could get these, um, things, uh, done now and, and not come back to you and ask you to take it from the Riverboat Fund. So that's why we're, excuse me, that's why we're asking you to do this now.
Okay. Now, now, now here's just another, uh, uh, swing to this kind of thing. Uh, so it's two, three years ago, we had this information that came to us from that inspection. I think right now I am very embarrassed and I think everyone else that was in the know should be embarrassed. How come, I mean, you know what? That, that just leaves like a bad taste because why didn't we fix this stuff before? Once again, here we are at the last hour and we're going to spend money to do something like this.
You voted against it. You voted against it three years ago. You voted not to do, you voted not
Remodel?
Yes, you voted not to, you, you voted not to do anything for, within that.
When you say, when you say you, let me ask
The council, the council.
Thank you. Thank you. The council, the council did. And yeah, and honest to God, I can't remember exactly what my vote was. But, but yeah, I, I just, okay, I just say, I had to bring this to the table because, uh, again, man, we should have fixed this a long time ago. Thank you.
I agree. I agree.
Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Yagalski.
Um, no, let's, let's understand what this is. The group, the group that came in, this is a wish list. If everything was perfect out there in the perfect world, this is what it was supposed to put in there. They had, they have no other credentials, but they go around and say, look, this would be the nice thing to do if you had all this. There was window protection. There was all kinds of things. So this is not, let's don't put it down as it was a act of God. We, we, we felt those things were not important at the time. Now, uh, if, if, and I'm not saying this argument goes one way or another, but I'm trying to help out, um, Mr. Santana. It's, there's all, we've gotten lists over the years about, um, the jail and things like that. And there's committees out there to say this is what they would like to have. There is nothing under mandate, as you all know. And those things were set as, some of those things were a wish list. And so you're supposed to, when you redo buildings, you try to, you try to put those in the list to get done. And then so, uh, let's don't put it down that, 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 that was the act of, that, that if you don't do it, you're out of violation. There was no violation here.
Thank you, Mr. Yagalski. Any other council members have any questions or comments regarding this issue?
Yes, please. Mike Roy. I'd like to remind people that there was a tremendous amount of, um, possibly up to about $100,000 of doing these type of security upgrades during the COVID situation. So we put in, um, key locks, I mean, the key fob locks in, in other locations. So this, um, was not done or selected to be done by the current treasurer at that time when everybody else was doing that. So there was some of the activity that went on this year. And I'll leave it go and say that. That's it. Good.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the council?
Mr. President?
Sure.
Yeah. Uh, Mike just mentioned key fob locks. And I don't, I don't have a problem with security. Carpet, I got a little problem with right now. But there's also, I think, was there ever, uh, um, I know this isn't that office, but I know for a fact down there at HR, they don't have a key fob there yet. It's supposed to have gone in, I believe. And also I don't know if there was ever one put on that extra door up there at the recorder's office that was talked about for quite a while. I mean, security, I think I don't have a problem with, but I think all those things should be taken care of as well.
I, I thought those were put on with the, um, COVID upgrades. I'll, I'll have to check on those.
Go on, Larry.
We did take care of HR. HR's got the door locks and it's, they've got a microphone. So what they do is we bring them in a whole different way now, Mike, or Councilman. And what it is, is they go to a window and then the secretary has to buzz them in before they can actually enter into the back area now. So that area was all taken care of.
Okay, but
I believe the record, you said the recorders? Is that what?
Yeah.
I believe we put all the, I believe, I believe all the fobs were done in the record. I, I could be wrong. I, I need to go there and check. I don't remember everything, but I believe we got the recorder's area done.
If, if I'm
Okay.
Like recorder's second door, one by their desks.
Right.
Not the one for the general public.
I, I will look. We, we may have missed one. We may have missed one, but I, I thought we had them all there for that. That's back where the, the one secretary sits right next to the door. I thought we had that one, but I, I will check, I will look into that.
Okay. And the one at HR, I think I'm familiar with that new entrance there. Uh, I thought there'd be a key fob though that would go, they're using a key yet to go in and out. I just thought there'd be a security fob there also. I don't see why not, but, okay.
Can, can I speak? This is Sterling Hale, the IT director. Um, just as for Larry, if you remember with the recorder's office, the one leading, that was in the office leading back by where the, the ladies sat back there, out there by the counter, we did not put a fob on that door because they can reach under the window on the inside of the door and open the door. The same thing was on the, um, real estate. So there was no reason to fob it when, if somebody really wanted in, they could just reach under the window and open the door. And that wasn't moved. So that's why we weren't fobbing that area.
Thank you, Darlene. Is there any other questions or comments regarding this issue?
One comment. Uh, was the motion meaning to reflect, uh, Commissioner Marzinski's, uh, remarks about subject to the commissioner's approval?
No, it's going to need to be amended.
Right. So who made the initial, I think Terry?
Gary.
Are you okay with amending it to reflect that?
Are you here, Daddy?
Terry? Terry Gardner?
Probably have to put this off to the next meeting. They can't hear me.
No, we can hear you, Councilman Santana.
It, it was
Terry Gardner, can you hear us?
See if I can find him.
It looks like he was disconnected, Mr. President.
So let's go with, uh, can we just have an additional motion or no? We gotta wait for Terry to come back?
Wait for Terry, yes.
Well, somebody called Terry. Reaching out to him, Joey?
I'm going to send him the link again.
Stop it. You back on? I see him back. Terry?
He's back.
Terry Gardner, can you hear us? Can you see, you see him, Joey? Can you unmute him?
Yeah, I'm back.
Right, there, there he is.
All right, Terry. We need you to, uh, if you, if you so choose to, to amend your motion to reflect that, um, this is pending the commissioner's approval.
Uh, that's fine. Pending commissioner's approval at their next meeting.
Right. All right. And then is it okay, Sean, with the second?
Second.
All right. All right. Is there any other questions or comments? Here are none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So is that two nays?
One nay.
Counselor?
I'm a nay.
Mullenhour. Mr. Rosen, how was your vote?
I was an aye.
Okay.
I think, Randy, I think it was, uh, Mullenhour and I, the nays.
Five to two.
Five to two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is, uh, consider approval of employee pandemic stipend. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, can I talk to the issue before this motion?
Like just, yeah.
So, so when this was brought up, there were a number of questions legally that had to be answered just for the public. And so we set a record because this is sort of unprecedented. So the first, uh, question was, we've used the term hazard pay, we've used the term stipend, we use the term bonus. So we had to try to sort out, you know, what's the state board of accounts going to do with this? So Ms. Ms. Winsky contacted the state board of accounts and we've looked at a number of correspondence. No matter what you call it, it's compensation and it's going to be considered salary. But that's, so that's the first thing. The second question will, and so because it is considered salary, elected officials will not get anything that the council appropriates because elected officials could not have any salary changes within the year. So the next thing is, would the state be okay with it? Would the state be okay with this going on? The state said, and state comes back and says, yes, we're okay with it as long as number one, the county has the money. Number two, it's properly appropriated. And number three, that the salary ordinance is amended. So that's the, that's the mechanism by which it has to be done. So we're going to have to first look at the appropriation before we discuss the salary ordinance amendment. If the appropriation fails, there's no sense in going forward with the ordinance amendment. Now typically ordinances require two readings or if you're going to do it on the first reading, you have to have a unanimous vote in order to do so. But because this is tied to an appropriation, you do not need a unanimous vote, just a majority vote. So that would be the way to follow through on this, should it be the council's pleasure. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. With, again, I, which, which ordinance are you going to change to 2019? Well, hang on a second. Hang on. The 2019 for 2020, you're, you're doing that? Because you can't do the salary ordinance we did, we just did because that's
No, correct. It's the, it's the one that, that ends on December 31st of 2020.
So it was a 2019 for 2020?
Twenty, yes.
And what, what is the purpose? Cause I don't understand that. In the past, we have not done this. I, I, we, we tend to change things as we go along here. What is the purpose that you, I don't see why you have to have a salary ordinance?
Because that's what the state board of accounts said, because it's a, it's going to be considered payroll and a change in salary. That
This is not, this is, I'm going to say that this is not payroll. This is money that's coming from, we took the money back. It's a, it's a unique situation. We sent the money and paid for it first, then we got reimbursed. So this is the reimbursement money we have that came from COVID.
I disagree with you, Mr. Yagalski, but y'all, I'm, I'm giving you my analysis because the money came in from COVID, but then it went into the general fund and anything that goes into the general fund needs to be appropriated. So, but I, I, I'm just reporting what we learned from the state board of accounts. So we can handle it at the audit next year. I mean,
Well, I'm not worried with the audit. We've had audits before. I, I, I'm, that's, that's irrelevant to, to, to me. I'm just wanting to make sure why we're doing this because it doesn't make any sense to me because this is COVID money. Now, now, if, if you're, if Mrs. Winsky said she took every single dollar and it got put back into the general fund, but I don't remember that happening.
Well, that would, oop, sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. We had allocated money to be, to be put back for expenses out of COVID. We didn't go back to the general fund.
No, no, no. So the way that it worked was we got to $3.1 million. It went into a fund and then it needed to be transferred into the general fund and then it needed to be appropriated just like any other appropriation. That's the way that that worked. And, uh, Mr. Friedman can also probably
Yeah, but we, but, but I don't, Mr. Freeman, we didn't do this. We appropriated money into a special fund for COVID money. So we pulled it out of the general fund. There's money out there.
I think you're talking about two different things. Are, we, we took, uh, $200,000, you took, I should say. You allocated $200,000 for a COVID fund. Is that the one you're talking about that we pay COVID expenses?
That's the one I'm talking about.
Okay. So we're talking about two different things. Guy is talking about the reimbursement from the CARES Act that came to us probably about, uh, maybe three, three weeks to a month ago.
Yeah, I know that. I'm, I'm
That was the $3.1 million.
I'm referring, that's why I don't need to hear that. I'm talking about the COVID fund.
Okay, well
And you're right. Frankly, if it had been done logically, it should have just gone, the 3.1 million went just to a COVID fund. But unfortunately, the state board of accounts sent out a memo to all the auditors around the state saying, look, we know this is going to create an extra step for you, but now you got to go ahead, do a resolution and take that reimbursed money and put it in, 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 into a convoluted, uh, situation where it goes back to the general fund and then you can appropriate there. No, you're talking logically.
And I have no problem with that. So if, if I want this money to come out of COVID because I believe it's going to be reimbursed, then I would like that to be proved. I'm just asking. I would get it into the fund and pay for it if I was going to do, if the vote goes that way.
I guess.
So that the money is, and I don't think that, uh, this is not, because otherwise this starts to become like, well, this money available, let's give more raises away.
No, but I think, I think you're right. It needs to be designated that it's part of that COVID fund when you appropriate it. You're absolutely right.
You know, I want to be in, I, I want to weigh in on this too. And, and, and you're exactly right. And we were not informed of that. I think that we were thinking along the whole, uh, way here that, um, that when, when we said this money is over here for that, that when the 3.1 came, it was going to be in that, uh, well, that, in that special account.
I know. And, and Councilman, can you, you got to think of it almost as if it is, okay? It is figuratively set aside, but for purposes of bookkeeping, the state board of accounts said, but you got to put it back in the, in the, uh, in the general fund. But you're right. You can think of it as your separate COVID fund that you're now appropriating from.
As long, as long as we have a running, as long as I believe we have a running number.
Agreed.
Then, then that would be agreeable.
Sure.
We, we do. It's all under a designated account. It's, it's all done by the, uh, state statute and, uh, according to state board guidelines.
I don't have a whole lot of state statute on, on COVID. I can tell you that right now. So
No, but there, there are, there are executive orders and, and
The executive order is not a state statute. That's exactly
No, but there, I, I can find the statute.
I understand. But I'm saying there's not a lot. So my point, my point, let me finish my point, please. So my point is that, say the vote goes and approves for tonight, instead of a salary ordinance, because I do not believe in amending a 2019 salary ordinance to do this at the end of the year, that this money should be appropriated into this fund and paid out through this fund. And you don't need a salary ordinance because it's not a salary.
That's, this is the way, if we want to give a hazard pay, it has to be done this way by, these are IRS guidelines now.
Now, wait, we're, now it's the IRS. Wait a minute. Let's go with the original one. That was not what the, uh,
Okay. Let me, let me just tell you.
Let's don't go bouncing around here, Joey. I'm telling you, Mr. Winsky, I, I don't want to go and say, I'm, because I disagree and I want to change is that you guys start making up other numbers. This money is money that we, that we can pay out to employees. We can pay out to, uh, uh, medical supplies. I, you can shake your head if you want, but yes. That was, that That was, that was already appropriated at a meeting earlier this year. So we have a fund set up. I don't wanna bring, change a twenty nineteen ordinance for a twenty twenty. It makes no sense to do that. And then, and then, then make a salary ordinance out of it. I would like to appropriate the money into that fund and pay out, out of that fund. My point only.
All right, any others disagree?
Then I'm, I'm gonna tell you that we cannot do that.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think you're right. Mrs. Winsky, I don't think you're right.
Okay, I'm gonna read you what, what I, I asked Lori Rogers and Ricky Hoffer, who are the, who are the, um, from the State Board of Accounts. And they said that, I said to them, uh, let's see, um, the county council, and this is what she said. The county council sets compensation for county employees on the salary ordinance. Elected officials' compensation may not be changed during the year for which it is fixed. We would not take exception to hazard pay as long as it was properly authorized within your salary ordinance. You had sufficient appropriation to pay the hazard pay and it did not change the compensation of an elected official. So no elected official can get the hazard pay.
Yeah, I know that.
But there are steps under IC Code thirty six dash two dash five dash thirteen that spell this out or tell you how it has to be done. And it has to be through the salary ordinance and the salary ordinance has to be amended.
Okay.
The only way we can do that.
And Mark, what's your proposition makes logical sense. What the State Board of Accounts, they forced us to do was to jump over another step.
They enforce this, a lot of times they come up with stuff and they, they're not always right. We have challenged the State Board of Accounts before. I am not afraid to challenge the State Board of Accounts.
Well, I, I cannot write the checks. If you, if you agree to this hazard pay, this is the only way that the checks can be written through, through the amended salary ordinance.
And I think that there could be a better question asked from, the way you wrote the question is not very well. It's not your fault because you didn't know Mark was gonna complain about it. The question, but the questions should have been very specific, but you didn't know this. But we, we have a fund set up, the fund set up, the, the money, your reimbursement can go into that fund. We are paying out things of that through that fund. Overtime, we paid out, we paid other things. So I disagree.
Okay, then let me read to you what I, what I wrote then, because you're, you're saying what I wrote. I, I said this, uh, I hope this finds you well. I apologize if I've asked this question before, but here it goes. One of our commissioners and the director of our emergency services is asked to be, has asked to be paid hazard pay for time work during the pandemic. It would be kind of a bonus paid. Did you hear that? It would be kind of a bonus paid. They're already, they are already receiving overtime pay. And I know private businesses can do this. And I know private business can and do give hazard pay, but I'm not even sure that this would be legal for us. That, when I asked the question in March, they told me it was not legal and that we couldn't do it. So now they have changed their, their, their mind. And what she, I just read to you what she said. It has to be done through the salary, through the salary ordinance.
Okay, so my last point is that this was a twenty nineteen for twenty twenty. I don't believe we can change that ordinance because that ordinance was adopted in twenty nineteen. That salary ordinance was adopted in twenty nineteen for budgetary process. The budgetary process is how we do things. This would have to change something was from last year. I don't, I don't, see, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't pay this thing, I don't agree how we're doing it.
Well, that's, that's the way it has to be done from the State Board of Accounts.
Hey, Joey, um, this is Larry Butcher, uh, Director of Homeland Security. Hey, uh, isn't anytime there's a, uh, presidential declaration, uh, I think the rules of, uh,
No, no.
Everything changes.
Nope, this is, this is right from the State Board of Accounts. This is the only way it can be done, I'm sorry.
Any other counsel?
Let me just.
Right, got it.
I, I've given y'all my interpretation of what we've gone through. You can accept it or not, but it, it is what it is. I, I've looked at all the emails from the State Board of Accounts. Uh, this, the State Board of Accounts, if you give them a dime, no matter what you call it, they're gonna call it salary. That's the way bureaucracy works, so.
Thank you, Guy. Is there any other council members that would like to speak?
Yes, I would on, on number two, I guess, special meeting business, uh, number two that we're talking about. Um, I'd like to make a motion to table that, please.
There's a motion to table, is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Gardner. All those in, bad monitor, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Molinour?
Nay.
Mr. Novak?
Nay.
Mr. Quinn?
Nay.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Santana?
Aye.
And Mr. Yagelski?
Nay.
Motion fails.
All right, so is there any other council members that would like to speak on this subject?
If we have a motion, then I would like to speak, but we do not have a motion.
I'm kinda waiting, no, no. Do we have a motion? What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, um, uh, I have to ask a question, because it's kind of, I don't have a problem with, I, I, I don't have a problem with making a motion to pass it. I don't agree on the payout process. So can we, I can make a motion just to, what is hot, yes or no, and then we can vote on, on the payout after? I'm asking.
It would have, it would have to be two steps, Mark, yeah. So the first would be as to the payout, as to appropriation. And the second would be what you all want to do with.
Okay, most, most, all right, Mr. President, thank you, thank you. Motion to, uh, to, uh, uh, for number two, to approve.
And what amount, Mr. Yagelski?
Uh, uh, that's a, that's a separate motion, I was told I could do it separately, so I, I don't agree.
I, I, that, that's vast act.
Wait a second, Mr. Santana.
Well, go ahead, that's fine, go ahead.
DiMartino, we not, we doing not make the motion with the amount now?
Yeah, I guess I misunderstood.
Right.
I misunderstood, Mr. Yagelski, I, I, I was assuming you were talking about whether it needs to go under the salary ordinance or not. Not, I, I, you have to make a motion and appropriate whatever, whether you're gonna do it by head or the, the total amount or whatever you're gonna do.
All right, Mr. Yagelski, would you like to amend your?
Okay, well, listen, I guess, uh, it, it's, if somebody's not gonna make a motion, I, I, I have no problem if we're gonna pay the people that we, we came up with. But the people that were at home during the time they're at home, I don't agree should be paid. They were, they were staying at home, I, they're, they're, they don't have to worry about expenses, driving into work, they don't have to worry about so-called being out there in front of the public and everybody has stuff. So I would like to, you know, as long as I can make a motion to separate the two, that would be my motion. So I agreed to make the motion that, uh, we pay the five hundred dollars to all employees. And, and, and at that time, the, all department heads have to turn in the time that they did not work in, in the county. And that, that time would be deducted. That's my motion.
So is there a, I guess, before I ask for a clarification on that, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Quinn. So, Mr. Yagelski, for clarification purposes, I mean, how would the bookkeeping, I, I.
Okay, let me, let me.
Exactly, but I'm saying.
Yeah, I'll help you real quick. For example, all department heads just have to turn this in. This, this is something that we had talked about and we made everybody keep track of this. For example, Darlene, there was one month she had, uh, she basically did not, they, they, they stayed at home. She knows that, I talked to her, because that's my department head. So that month will be deducted, then they will get to, they will get to the, the other two, the other months that we're talking about. So if this thing was written and we, if this thing goes from the actual time, which was March first, basically, uh, till the end, till the end of this year, that's nine months. So then you have to, you just have to deduct that, it's really, it's not hard for a computer to do that.
So it would be a proration?
Yes, proration.
A proration? Is that, um, do you understand that, Mr. Quinn? Is that, you agree with that?
Yes, I understand that.
Second, I just wanna.
Yeah, it, it, maybe if, just a quick question for Councilman Yagelski. Um, my understanding is what you're saying is that, uh, this would be prorated based on the time that employees were in the office, uh, you know, and, and not work from home.
Yes, sir.
All right, good.
All right. Just a point of clarification, Mr. Yagelski, how would this handle, sick would not be included in it? We're just.
No, wouldn't, yeah, absolutely not, yeah.
All right, I just wanna, because I'm sure.
So is this taking the count that the doors were locked and they, people couldn't get in?
Employees can get in.
Players always get in.
But what about the public? The public couldn't get in, so what, what dangers were they in?
Well, in our, I can tell you that in our office, we let the public in. We had, we had people in our office every day. There wasn't a day that we missed. And if somebody came to the door, we went down and we let them in.
Can I, can I, uh, say something here?
No, no.
Hey, well, oh, this is council people.
No.
Right, this is a council meeting, so these are just the.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
I apologize.
Yep. Uh, any, so we have a motion and a second on the question, so.
Mr. President?
Mr. Molinour.
Yeah, I'd like a little bit more clarification.
Sure.
Um, I'm a little confused here. I, I, I know, uh, it was mentioned earlier about, um, with the commissioners, I think it was that they talked about, uh, uh, different departments where they mentioned shares department EMS and that. And my thoughts there was, is there's many other departments that, uh, such as IT. Um, we heard from, uh, um, Christine Harlow with Protective Services and there are others that went out in, in the field, so to speak, and did their job. Um, Community Corrections, um, the mechanics at the jail, all that. Where we start, I don't know, my feeling is, is if some of these departments, and I think it was a good point, those doors were locked. So really, I don't think there was too much danger of, uh, exposure at that time without the public coming in or they were at home. I just.
The only thing, the only thing that I would say is, is if you're sitting in an office with a bunch of other people that were out seeing other people, that is exposure. So they might not be exposed to all the public, but if they came to work, uh, whether the doors were locked or not, they came to work and they did, they did their job and there is.
Everybody.
Well, if, if, if you went to the time, if you wanted to.
All right, all right, if, if you went to the gas.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Santana?
Absolutely, thanks, Bill. Hey, thanks, chief. Hey, uh, uh, yeah, um, if you went to the gas station, you were exposed. I mean, I get that, I just wanna say one more thing, I wanna say one more thing too. Public opinion right now is two, is, and God love our county employees, but no paychecks were ever missed. Everyone stayed on board. We didn't play the layoff and then, you know, it, it, it always tickles me because they talk about furlough. Furlough's just a, 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 a nice name. You're laid off, pal, look at the, look up the definition. But anyway, we didn't do that. And so this is what I'm hearing and this is why it is very difficult and hard for me because they're saying, again, that they were all going to work, they're not getting hazard pay. Um, and, and, and since our employees were paid the whole time, why, why, why are you gonna give them a bonus? I'm just, I just gotta share with you.
Thank you, Mr. Santana. Is there any other council members?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yeah, I have a, it's a bit longer than a minute, so please bear with me. I just wanna talk about several different topics as we lead to get to this vote. I first wanna talk about the discussion of employee raises. For, uh, twenty twenty, instead of a one percent raise, we gave all employees a thousand dollars and part-time employees half of that. So for a full-time employee making forty thousand dollars, a one percent raise would have been four hundred, not a thousand. So obviously the bonus was more. So what I'm trying to share with you when I get done with this is that we do try and take care of the employees. For twenty twenty one, instead of following the prior year, the council chose to give employees a raise of two percent, which is better than the cost of living based on social security benefits of one point three percent. We also did something with the insurance, we've asked them to pay more. In most private industries, they are not paying fifteen percent, they're paying thirty-five percent or more. But this time, we gave them a five hundred dollar bonus, which covers just about everybody except for people with family coverage. Again, the council cares for the employees. We are trying to do our best for them, understanding our comp, understanding what's within our limits. There are limited tax dollars. CARE Act funds were a total of three point six million. According to my discussion with Joey Winsky, we have spent over four point one million. So we emptied the piggy bank and we have not quite replenished it. There is still a shortage of the funds because we're still out a half a million dollars. Many times, we were promised items would be covered and not all costs were covered by the CARES Act. Just because we have the money back in the account, doesn't mean that it's CARE Act funds, because we've already spent it. How did we get here? We heard already, there was a request from frontline workers for hazard pay. Commissioners set the path forward without informing the entire council. We went ahead and gave a raise, but we may have considered something differently. The council reviewed and rejected the, uh, the initial plan and, because it was too subjective. And now here we go, we're starting again with making it very subjective. The commissioners, they came up with another plan that I call the participation bonus. Not one employee that not, did not go without a paycheck unless they chose to do so. I do know of one person who chose to go and collect unemployment for a short period, but that is only one. The taxpayers' as of August twenty twenty in Lepore County had jobless claims of eight point five percent. So many players went without paychecks. And even with stimulus packages, unless they made less than forty thousand, did not receive any amount of money. Taxpayers with large, which large salaries were furloughed and laid off. How do we ask them to foot the bill and use funds that have been set aside for future needs? That's where the initial funds came from, that's where they were put back. As the county takes on more responsibilities and costs, such as the Michigan City testing site and hopefully soon the vaccination clinics that are scheduled to be held in the community building at the fairgrounds to start, does not come without cost. During the stay-at-home shutdown in March, I never stopped being employed. I consider myself one of the lucky ones. I stopped into the Lepore County buildings in the city of Lepore, thanking everyone who I saw there. The council as a whole recognizes our first-line workers, what they do and their efforts, but also understand they were paid, including overtime. We will not embarrass anybody by trying to find out how much their average paychecks were. But they were paid overtime and were compensated for their time. That is my, that is the comments that I've wanted to share.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagelski?
Okay, um, part of the compensation, the reason why I agreed, agreed to this is the commissioners pulled off that building, which would have cost us three, three hundred, which would cost three quarters of a million dollars. So the building was taken off the agenda and, uh, there was, uh, the commissioners agreed to keep that off. So that was future money that was allocated that we were talking about when we had our special meeting. So that's why I was able to do that. I will not embarrass anybody, this is payroll. Nobody gets embarrassed by payroll. You turn, you turn in and say, I worked X amount of days, I didn't work, and you get paid for that, about that amount you're gonna be reimbursed for. That is not an embarrassment. Pay, that's how payroll works. If I have a question and they messed my check up, I go in and they go through all my hours and they, they, they change it accordingly. That's done every day, that's done at our courthouse, it's done at my job. Mr. President?
Mr. Santana?
Yeah, um, well, a couple of things here, because I wanna respond to Mark a little bit too, but Mr. Rosenbaum. Uh, great words, uh, I, I know that, uh, that was prepared and it was prepared in a good fashion, in my opinion. I hope that everyone really listened to the, to the whole context of what he was delivering. And I, I, I guess what, okay, so that's that address, uh, and so thanks, Mr. Rosenbaum, for that. And I, I, I guess what, okay, so that's that address, uh, and so, thanks, Mr. Rosenbaum for that. And to Mr. Yagowski, I guess, um, the, um, the deal as far as embarrassing, and I know how he said it in that fashion. No one would know anyway. It's going to be turned into probably, what, either the auditor's office? Well, it's gonna come from the department head, and so, then they're gonna, and then they're gonna cut the check for, you know, if it was 500 to begin with and you didn't work, maybe it's 333, I don't know. But, yeah, so, so there won't be an embarrassment, it would just be a cut deal that, um, here's what you all get, right?
Right, sir. Yes, sir.
Are you done, Mr. Santana?
Yes, 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 sir.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes. What I meant by embarrassed was the fact that the same people who are getting overtime are asking for the money.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other council comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Madam Monitor, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Nay.
Mr. Santana?
Nay.
Mr. Yagowski?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
How did Mr. Gardner vote? I thought he voted.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Well, I'm, I, I, I knew how you felt, I just thought I misunderstood you there, so.
Yeah, it's four, it was, it was four to three, well, I think we've all known.
Okay, could, could I have someone reiterate the, the motion again so that I have it correct?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Yagowski.
Madam Monitor, um, we, uh, you have to, everybody that, all the employees have to go and turn in a revised amount of work, actual work at the county complex. Now, like Mr. Novak said, if they're on the road, that's work, cuz they, they were meeting with people, same thing. I consider that work being at the county complex. So they deduct that amount, and they take that amount, and we're going, the amount should figure from March 1st till December 31st, and then subtract that amount, happens to be, for example, let me just use comparison, uh, cuz it's no secret because we got, these, with, these hours were, were reported, and I worked directly with her. They worked one month out of the office, worked at home. Um, the, this is, I'm talking about IT, so she understands that, she understood what I, when I asked her how she felt about that. So though, though, you will deduct that amount, pro, prorate it, and get paid.
So it would be in, in, from prorate, March, from March 1st?
Yeah, that's when this basically happened, yeah.
So March 1st through December 31st, a proration, and if you break it down $500 to a daily rate, and figure it out, and come up, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it, it, it will be March 1st through December, um.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, March 1st to December 6th, okay, whatever, that's fine.
Right, what, whatever that payroll is.
Right.
Um, okay, so that, that, I just wanna get this correct, that we'll have to figure hourly rate for each person and then multiply it times the, the rates that they did work?
You'll get a da, you'll get a daily rate, and you'll get it proportionate to how many days you were working in the, uh, working in the office.
You did, you take that number of days that's in, in that period of time that Mr. Yagowski specified, divide that by the 500, and you come up with a dollar amount, and for every day they worked, they get that much. If they didn't work, they don't get that much. Is that right, Mr. Yagowski?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Right.
Okay.
Mister President, I, I have one thing or two things I'd like to mention, is that okay?
Well, we have to amend the salary ordinance first.
Wait a second, I know, we're still.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr.
Mullenhour. Hey, um, I wanted to mention too that elected officials will not receive this.
That's right.
Right, okay, and the other thing is, will this be a separate check for the employees or into the, in payroll? In the regular check?
This will be on the December 18th payroll check.
Okay.
Ho- hopefully, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yagowski, were you gonna add something?
Yeah, I, I talked to a few employees, some of the employees would have liked a separate check, but you have to remember, they're gonna be paid at the end of the year, and in February, they're, they're doing their taxes already. Whether, whatever tax situation is, you're gonna get, they're gonna get their money back, but had this been January 1st, I would have been okay with writing a separate check, but I really don't think it's gonna make much difference, Mike.
Right, I agree. Thank you. Hey, uh, Joey, if I may ask, uh, for point of conversation, I guess, uh, if, i- if it doesn't get made, uh, by the 18th payroll, when, when, when would the next payroll be?
January 4th.
Yeah, I knew it, 2021, next year, new regime. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so the next item on the agenda is amending the 2020 salary ordinance. What's your pleasure? Start off with a motion, if we're gonna do it. We can always discuss it and vote it down, so. Drop, it doesn't matter.
Mister President, make a motion to. Mister President, make a motion to adapt, uh, to change the 2019 for 2020 salary ordinance.
Can we go back one, please? Can we first make a motion to have it on one reading? Tonight, it's being, it's being advanced tonight, and it's gonna be voted on tonight.
But we didn't have 100% vote.
You don't, you don't need one because it's an appropriation.
Majority, right, alright.
It's the way it got worded, uh, in that, in that situation, and that's, and, but Guy did tell us that earlier, so. Yeah, but good, good point, uh, Mr. Rosenbaum, thank you.
Is there a motion to? Go ahead.
A second, go.
Mark?
Yeah, Mister President, motion to adapt it one meeting, one reading.
Alright.
Second.
By Mr. Mullenhour, motion by Mr. Yagowski. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Madam Monitor, would you call the roll?
Yes. Uh. Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
I yield to my fellow council members and I say aye.
Mister Santana?
Wait a second, wait, okay, there I am, aye, nay.
Mr. Yagowski?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gardner?
Nay.
Mr. Mullenhour?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two.
Mister President?
Mr. Yagowski?
Make, make a motion to read by title only.
A motion by title only, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Who's the nay?
It's, uh, it's Gardner and I, probably.
Santana and Rosenbaum?
No.
Gardner.
Gardner.
Santana.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, by title only, Madam Monitor?
A motion to amend the salary ordinance. For 2020, excuse me.
Alright. Mr. Yagowski?
Mister President, motion to, uh, uh, motion to, uh, change the salary ordinance. I should say, I should say 2019 for 2020, cuz that's when it was adapted.
To reflect the motion that was passed, go ahead, wait a second.
The, it was budgeted in 2019, but the ordinance was signed on January 27th, 2020, so it's a 2020 ordinance.
Okay, that's fine.
Budgeted, okay, so.
Alright, sorry, sorry, Mister President, and mo- motion to approve.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour and Mr. Quinn.
Hey, just, just another comment real quick because I, it, it just keeps, uh, it just keeps going around and around. Um, that was probably because, like you said, it was, uh, voted and then, or not voted, until the following year because we didn't have a December meeting. Thanks.
No, 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 the ordinance, the salary ordinance is, oh, you didn't vote in the 2021 salary ordinance. It, that'll be done by the, on the first meeting of the council in 2021.
I thought you were saying about 1920, that we didn't actually adopt the 20 until January something.
And you're, you're gonna adopt next year's, on the first meeting, the council's gonna adopt it in the first meeting in January this year, the 2021. It's always done at the first meeting.
Alright, is there any other?
Yeah, I just wanna correct for the record too, that we did have a December meeting in 2019.
So, alright, is there any other questions regarding the motion?
Did we? Alright, go ahead.
Mister.
No, Randy, I, I, you know, I was just, but, did, did, hey, Rand, you were the president last year, did we have a meeting last, uh?
I believe we did have a, a special meeting in Dec- in December.
I think it had to do with the insurance premium, or something along those lines.
Alright, Madam Monitor, would you call the roll?
Um, let's see, where did I leave off?
I was the last.
Miss, Mr. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Nay.
This, this is to amend the salary ordinance, right?
Aye, yeah, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
Alright.
Um, okay, Mister Santana?
Nay.
Mister Yagowski?
Aye.
Mister Gardner?
Nay.
Uh, Mister Mullenhour?
Aye.
And Mister Novak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Four to three.
Is there, um, any council comments?
Yeah, I'm gonna have a comment. I, I, I might as well, why not, uh, and I wa, I want the people to, you know, sometimes the Democrats get a bad rap for spending, and I say, you know what? Li- live with it, because, oh my gosh, what I just saw within, you know, so much time here, it's, it's, it's appalling to me. I'm not gonna leave my party, I will tell you that. But, um, I'm a little embarrassed, and thank you, that's it. I'm a taxpayer, and I, I like to watch the money. Thanks a lot.
As we all do. Mister, any other comments?
I'd, I'd just like to make a comment that, um, I think things went well tonight, uh, I appreciate, um, uh, I think everybody's reached a new level of fatigue and challenge right now, and, uh, a lot of stress, uh, for all of us, and, um, we're gonna make it through, and I think that this, um, this'll show there, there are employees that we appreciate everything they've done for us over the years, and especially this past year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Yeah, just one more thing, I guess, just to remind everybody, I just really kinda, uh, halfway, more than not, 100% thought this could have waited till the January meeting when all of the changes take place. I truly believe that this was, I, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and I think it does, uh, to some of the other, uh, people in the county, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Alright. Any other comments? Mister.
Rand?
Um, I wish to, uh, first give a happy, happy holidays to everybody. Uh, for those who are Jewish, they start Hanukkah tomorrow, Christmas, and we know when the, those dates are, the New Year as well. To, uh, Mister Quinn and Mister Santana, we, we really need to thank you for your service. Um, you don't put eight years in and not have to do something, and you don't put in when you're, when you're filling in or taking over, uh, there are a lot of hard work had to go into getting caught up from Mister Quinn, and it was well-recognized and noticed, and we did not get this opportunity to say it at the last meeting. And I think, um, as elected officials, uh, they deserve, uh, to know that it's right. Thank you.
I agree with Mike, we, uh, we do appreciate both of you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much to, um, like, as, as you stated, Councilman Santana and Councilman Quinn. And the, the nice thing about the, the council is, we don't always agree, but, um, we, we always get things done, so, um, and we try to keep things moving forward the best that we can, so. Um, with that, I too wish everybody, um, best to all the employees in the county, and thank you for all you do. Uh, to Joey Winski, our auditor, soon to be treasurer next year, thank you for all you did. Guy DiMartino, fantastic job, you did a great job, look forward to working with you again next year. Barb, Larry, everybody else on the meeting, um, Shaw, Andrew, and I'm just looking at the people that's on my front page, so. Um, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Randy, before we, before we do that, I just wanna say that it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the people of Lepore County, um, this past year, and, uh, it's been wonderful working with you, President Novak, and the other council members. Um, hopefully, this won't be the last you hear from me.
I hope not. I hope not.
Same here, John.
Definitely.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Real quick, uh, uh, I don't know how or what we have to go through, but, uh, I most definitely, most definitely, 100% gonna be at the meeting hall, uh, uh, for the January meeting, and, uh, so I need, we need to put that out there. I know Mister Rosenbaum feels the same way, but.
Is that a?
I'm standing here now.
Is that a finger over your phone?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay, I thought you were.
Could, could I, um, could I ask when you would like to have your reorganization meeting? So that we, we can, um, we can advertise that?
What's the first date available?
The 4th. Monday, the 4th.
Monday, January 4th.
Is that?
I'm fine with the 4th or the 5th, that's everybody's pleasure.
Tuesday. Um, so the 3rd, is that the consensus, or the 4th?
The 4th is a Monday.
4th.
I'm fine.
Alright, so the 4th.
4th?
Yeah, just, just a li, just a little.
At 6:30?
Just a little light humor. I'm, I'm not gonna make that one, okay?
At 6:30?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um. Is there, what else were, it seemed like there was something else, we were just, is there anything else we need to finish up on? So that's the next meeting.
Um. Uh, quick questions, there a date for the swearing-in of the new elected officials?
I think it's whenever you wanna be sworn in.
Is there gonna be a date at the complex that there always was?
Um.
I don't know.
Not, not that I know of.
Right, and, and as far as, as far as an in-person, you know, that it has to be an in-person meeting on, in, I mean, I can see opening it up, but I mean, I'm still cautious with the, the numbers, hopefully everything with the vaccine coming and everything. Uh, I just hate to see us jump into things and.
Please, please do be cautious, again, uh, I, 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 it's, it's, it's a growing number of individuals that I think just in our area, and you would know, Rand, and I know, and Mark, and everybody, it's, uh, it's, it's ridiculous, so please do be careful.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, all.
Thank you, you too.
See you guys later. Thank you.
Thank you.